Call this meeting to order. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, you have one change on the agenda, please.
Okay, that would be under reports.
Correct. If you could add Fire Department, our Fire Chief report as item D and then move Engineering to E and City Administrator to F, please.
All right. With no other, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Open forum. If anybody would like to speak about any issues around the community, feel free to come on up. All right. Consent agenda is approved of minutes. Bills, purchase orders, investments. There's a donation resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-five from Melrose Bowl in the amount of five hundred dollars to the Melrose Park Recreation Fund for the purchase of trees. Thank you for that. There's a Community Development Director step increase and E and T appointment, and then there's a pay out number five. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We are at six oh three. We have a public hearing right now for cannabis.
The public public hearing is regarding a proposed ordinance to regulate the use of cannabis in public in the city of Melrose. This ordinance is based on Stearns County's ordinance and it also follows ordinances that have been adopted in surrounding communities. The ordinance runs on for quite a while, but most of it is definitions. I won't go through all the definitions on all the cannabis and hemp products that they list. Those definitions are coming out of the new state statute. I think the key thing to be aware of is where it defines a public place and it includes, you know, park, trail, street sidewalk, enclosed indoor area used by the public, including theaters, restaurants, bars, places to sell, license to sell intoxicating liquors, gyms, common areas of buildings. The reason this is an issue is under the state statute. They permitted it, but they didn't address this issue. So they legalized the use. They did, specify some areas where you have, where you couldn't say that people can't use it, and we recognize that in the ordinance where we're saying that, hey, public places don't include private residences, other private property, places that are licensed to for on-site consumption of cannabis products. Again, that tracks the state statute. We're trying to address the kind of the hole that the state law left. You see, this, this ordinance, if it's adopted, basically tracks the county's ordinance, which is already in effect. So by adopting this, nothing is going to change for the public. They're already operating them. But what we're really doing is setting this up to provide for local enforcement. One of the items that we have included in here by adopting this, that it gives the council the opportunity to make this like essentially a payback with administrative fine if you would choose to do that. Unless there's some questions about any of the items, I guess I'll cut off my remarks here. See if anybody else kind of wants to speak to this issue.
So there's a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, have the right to speak. We will take action in a little bit, but if anybody would like to speak about this, this is your time. All right, it is six oh seven. We will visit with this in a little while. Under reports, Police Chief monthly report.
Yes, sir. October twenty-three in our traffic hearing. We had fourteen citations, forty-four verbal warnings. For twenty twenty-three, we had two hundred seventy-three called requests for service. Last year was two seventy-nine. We ended on ISAR twenty-four twenty and last year's twenty-nine forty-nine. Fifteen agency assists. Those continue to stay low, so that's good to see. Interesting point, we were only down six calls from last year compared to this time this year. We have been dropping continually throughout the year. It's amazing what you can do with proactive police enforcement, captain, staff. So it's good to see those numbers coming back around. A couple of areas to notify the council of. We had two resignations. Alyssa Infer was on our part-time roster. She has decided to leave law enforcement at this point. She also left her full-time employment with Todd County, so she removed herself from our roster. Austin Kousk got his resignation in. He was a police reserve. He actually started with Sock Center Police Department as a full-time officer, back in May. Doris said, make sure we clean up the books, and I got that in here. So that was good to see. Squad cars. So we have some light at the end of the tunnel. At least we believe we do. If we have a twenty-three ordered squad car, which we do, they say they will build it for us in twenty-four. The day it's keys are in my hand, I'll believe it. But anyway, our twenty-four squad that we have budgeted should be built later in twenty-four than as a twenty-five. Potentially get two cars next year. Beauty part of some of this is we did go with a different motor, so we saved twenty-six hundred dollars on at least the first squad car. So it's good to see that we may get a car after roughly twenty-six months of waiting.
Questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
City Attorney report, Scott.
Nothing.
All right. City Planner report, Sheila.
So our comprehensive plan public workshop was held on Thursday, October twenty-sixth. There was excellent table discussions between people and they were reviewing city maps and sharing ideas. We have open survey number two, and so we want to encourage everyone to complete survey number two. Right now, we're working on setting up some small group sessions with members of the community we have not heard from yet because we want a lot of voices to be heard as we create this plan. Construction continues all over town. Quick trip, changes every day, as you can see. Riverside Flats next door has their roof on, windows and patio doors. They're working on that, and I know the plumbers and electricians are busy inside. Odon Railroad, they're framing up garages and their elevator shaft is ready. So we had the good fortune of having a couple extra weeks of weather and a lot of people took advantage of a lot of concrete. There was a lot of concrete being poured all over town. And I know that our street electric and waste and wastewater guys are very happy for the extra couple weeks that we have gotten. Building permits are up over twenty-seven million, and now we're just getting very excited about twenty-four. And we're progressing on several fronts on new projects for twenty-four. We did get some feedback on our GRIP grant. We did not receive the GRIP grant, but they gave us some really excellent feedback about strengths and strengths that we had had and weaknesses, and so we plan to reapply for the GRIP grant program. And then I have other items later in the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Sheila. Chief Buddy? Is here for the Fire Department?
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Just give you a quick update with regards to where things are at with the Fire Department. Typically, every year of this time of the year, we come to you guys looking for a pair increase for our retirement fund. So we all know the economy is like labor, so that didn't do very well, so we will not be requesting a increase on that. We'll say status quo. Next year, let's just say pause for next year. Equipment wise, excuse me, on the agenda tonight, you guys can see an action item for public safety fire equipment. What we're looking to purchase is a set of new jaws, cutters, spreaders, and a ram. Current piece of equipment that we have, we've got two sets of them. The ones that, and actually both sets, the equipment that the vehicles that are being made of nowadays is getting tougher and tougher, so the older sets are going to be cut through. Nice to see those public safety funds come in and be able to have access to it for purchase. So there's that on there, and then there's also these airbags that we use and have used a couple calls to help lift the thirty-five thousand pounds is what they can lift. One of them, so it's nice. I know we used it on a tractor all over. It's nice to be able to get the equipment up and start stabilizing it. And then the last thing, just a quick update. As most, Chief Mouse talked about equipment, vehicles, we all know are delayed and also very expensive. So twenty twenty-eight, our ladder project is scheduled to be replaced. We do have funds set aside, but unfortunately with the recent economy and the way things have gone, there's not enough in there. And so we will be talking to several local businesses and asking for some donation money. Hopefully get a five-year commitment so that by the time it comes to purchase, we have the funds in there. And with that same note, we all like to see the city grow. Just so you guys know, the two new apartment complexes that are being put up, three stories, we do not have a tool in our toolbox to be able to get to the top of those. So that's what this new ladder is looking to do. Use the ladder need to get to the top of these things or help out. So be asking the city to also be able to support the other donations and maybe contribute some money to the funds. And as we get closer to it, I should say closer to it, but if we can have some type of a meeting down the road to be able to see if the city could contribute. Love to see the growth, but with the growth comes bigger equipment.
Questions? Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thanks.
Engineer report?
All right. Good evening. Things are wrapped up there construction-wise for me, so a little quick report tonight. Twenty twenty-three street project has approved. We're soon to be close to the final payment. All we're waiting on is grass zero on that guy. Railroad Avenue, all pipes in the ground, subgrade is cut. We're just adding gravel back, yes, so it'll be done by next Tuesday. Everything else remains on the agenda later, so short and sweet unless you have questions.
Thank you.
Claim.
In your packet, you would have found the filing and assignment for Melrose Community LLC versus the City of Melrose and the City of Melrose Public Utilities Commission, along with the scheduling conference. In speaking with Jim Thompson, who's our attorney representing us through the League of Minnesota Cities, our strategy is to counterclaim and ask the judge to make a declaration that states the city can collect the delinquent accounts, delinquent amounts by certifying them on property taxes in Melrose Community LLC. So now it's just in the court system. We're going to see where that goes. Work continues in the wastewater plant. JWC was out there again. It looks like they're probably going to finish up and hopefully get the final issues with the screens resolved. Also attached in your packet was a proposed class action lawsuits regarding PFOS. If you guys have heard me talk about before, this is the polyfluoride chemicals, the forever chemicals, the little plastics you can't see. So there's really three options. Actually, there's really only two options in my view, but one is be included in the settlements. If you want to do that, no action is needed at this time, and we simply have to file claims by early twenty twenty-four. Opt out by the deadlines in early December, and this would preserve the city's litigation for future lawsuits. Do nothing, but I'm not going to recommend that as an option. So I think you have to do one or two. Just to give you some, just to give you some framework around this, when we went ahead and measured our PFOS, both at our wastewater and our water levels, they're very low. So we really have no PFOS at this time in our system or very, very little. And so the PUC discussed this at their meeting on Monday, and they made the recommendation that we file as part of the class action lawsuit. So I will have probably some additional information for you at the next council meeting, but I just want you to be aware of that.
Sorry, question on that real quick. If the levels are extremely low, I would assume any settlement is the communities that file will be higher, the compensation will be higher if they have higher levels. So if our levels are really low, we probably won't get much out of that much. What happens if, obviously, stuff takes a while to seep through the ground, ten years from now, now our levels start to go up? Now, since we filed already, that's probably it, I would assume. So.
And that was a discussion that also happened at the PUC meeting as well on Monday.
All right, so I don't know. Not likely to get much out of the class action, but.
So I think that part of the, and Joe can maybe shed some light because obviously from the PUC perspective, but because of the fact that what creates those, the types of companies that are in your community, we simply don't have those that exist within the community of Melrose. We don't have three implants near us. Yes, there is a regulation with it getting, you know, the EPA is coming down and saying much more testing of PFOS. There's a working group at the MPCA who is kind of looking at that as well. So I know in the next legislative session, we're going to be down there talking about that at great length because our environmental group through the coalition has said, you can't put this burden on cities. And so it was a feeling of the PUC now, certainly the council. Very much want your input as to what you guys would like to do, but they felt like this is perhaps the one opportunity we had.
Another side thought is, I know our wells are pretty deep, and those are, that's probably where we did our testing from. Well, there's lots of, there's a lot of wells, personal wells around town that are a lot shallower. Did we reach out to any well owners that we know to maybe test their, their water samples?
I don't know if we did at the PFOS level because that was not something that we did. We actually, that was the Minnesota Department of Health that came on, did that.
That may be the.
And our folks do test our water for several different things. Like there's a, there's a test group that they go to every year and test water, take water samples always, but.
You know, I did bring that up to them about everything that for me, I felt like future would be better, but you know, if the council feels that it should be brought back to the PUC, you know, for a rediscussion, I mean, it's up to all of you.
The only thing is you're on your own.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, somebody else is dealing with it. They're doing it all. You're just part of the whole group. If you're going to test it ten years from now, now you're going to be on your own.
And then your attorney fees are.
Right.
And that was the point.
Yeah.
Right.
Because I mean, this is what they do for a living.
Yeah, there's no expense. No, right, because this is state-sponsored plastic or something.
Well, it's against DuPont. It's against three M.
Right.
And any communities that have, that have the wastewater, you have to meet certain thresholds. We're just in there because of our class four. It's up to you guys. Just give me direction either way.
Are you okay with that decision?
Yeah. Yeah, yes.
All right, that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Then we are on action items. Stearns County show recommendation.
We were approached by Mr. Mark Meyer of Meyer Grove, who is working on a proposal for the Stearns County Park Board. He is asking Stearns County, they're now updating their entire park plan. He is asking Stearns County to please consider a extension of Lake Wabagon, basically hooking Lake Wabagon down to Dairyland Trail. It would go from Highway four down. And so this is jet, and he's approached all of the towns and cities that he believes would benefit from this, from Sock Center to Melrose to Greenwald, Meyer Grove. He's asking city support for Stearns County basically to study this. It wouldn't be anything on our part. It's just something that we support Stearns County looking at this trail extension. And that is his request. His petition was included in your packets.
I said I have no problem with it. I just hope that they look at the whole picture because I think we all know the New Munich way would probably be the shortest to that trail. A lot less people to deal with, but I know they do want to try to connect trails, which will bring more people into our area. We look at where people come from all over country through our community on that trail, that I'm not against at least signing it and letting them do their investigation.
I guess in order for personally me to support a petition for the county to add that to their camp plan, I'd need to know a lot more about it. I mean, this could be a thirty to fifty million dollar project. You don't know. Trails are not cheap. There's a lot of trails around the lot already. And in my opinion, before, I would want the city of Melrose to say, yes, we want this. Because that's what the petition does, is I would need to see a lot more information on it, cost. Cost benefit analysis, how many people are going to use it? There's a fair number of people that use the trails we have, but the more trails you have, it might just cut down on the numbers that are using each trail. Back in twenty thirteen, there's an article that Stearns County had to borrow close to a million dollars for trail maintenance because they didn't have it in the budget. So they're expensive. It's a want, it's not a need. So if we're going to lobby the county, there is our taxes to build a big trail like that. I don't think we should sign onto that at this time, personally.
I guess I'd implore them to do their investigation, at least to check and see what it is.
And if it's all right, we'll look into it.
So any other discussion? So I guess whoever would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to look into it further.
Or just sign off to let the county, let them give the information to the county is really all it's doing, right? That's all it is.
Okay. Then I'll second that.
Okay, there's a first and a second.
Is that to sign the petition?
Correct.
So this is a motion to sign the petition?
To sign the petition and to, I don't, unless I misread it, it's not signing a petition about the trail, and it's just signing a petition to look into.
I thought I read in there to add it, add the trail to their ten to twenty-year plan. Add the trail, so.
Yeah, they'd have to do their research.
But it's not. It wouldn't be getting done until, until you go through all the stuff you just asked about. They won't put it in, I would assume, with one petition.
I don't know. Petitioning to have them add it to their plan to do it, ten to twenty-year plan, so.
Well, you're going to have a lot of, you know, you're going to have to have a lot of farmers signing off on, you know, area there, and they're on a state highway. It's going to take a lot.
Might be enough right away along the highway to accomplish it, but anyway. Motion and a second, you go ahead.
Yeah, there's a motion. There's a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-six, resolution supporting local road improvement program application for Railroad Avenue.
Yes, last month I was here and we had a resolution supporting our local road improvement program application for Main Street. And I talked to you and warned you briefly I'd be back this month. This is a joint project between us and Melrose Township. We were approached by Melrose Township on this one. It is to complete Railroad Avenue. We are, as part of our current project, going to be paving until the end of the apartment building. We have a small segment left. Melrose Township is interested in having us finish that, and then they would finish the rest of railroad and the Sock River Bypass paving. This is an idea they approached us with. It's a joint application I'm working with them on. If the local road improvement funds are not received, this project will not go forward. So it's just putting in for the funds. If the funds come through, great. If they don't, it would not go forward. So the resolution would be supporting the application for local road improvement program funds for this project.
Any questions? All right. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. See fire equipment, public safety funds.
So part of the twenty twenty-four capital budget that we just looked at prior to this meeting will include equipment purchases with the one-time public safety funds that we'll be getting at the end of December. Due to long lead times, Fire Chief is recommending getting the equipment ordered prior to receiving these funds. Fire Chief obtained quotes for the extraction tools and airbags and is recommending awarding the quotes to Alex Gator and Ryan.
Okay. Is there any questions? I did have the, I have had the ability to try these. They really made a big difference on hook to wires or, you know, the hydraulic cables. Definitely something that will help out when you're deep in a ditch. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Fire Chief appointments?
According to the Fire Department policies, officers' terms expire every two years. The terms will expire on January first, twenty twenty-four. Therefore, applications for chief, first assistant chief, second assistant chief, and training officer were accepted October first through the October fifteenth. Fire Chief Tom Booty was the only applicant for the fire chief position. Therefore, interviews were not conducted. Administrator Winter is recommending Chief Booty, Booty be reappointed as Fire Chief for appointments for twenty-four and twenty-five.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Streets and Parks Supervisor's job description.
Yep. The Street Parks Supervisor position needed clarification and general cleanup of the job description. City Administrator Winter, H R Reland, and Finance Director Meyer all looked at this and reviewed the job description. And so I am recommending the council to give consideration adopting the revised Streets, Parks Supervisor job description.
Any questions?
Did Gary have any input on it?
Uh huh, he did.
All right. I didn't see him. Just wanted to make sure Gary had.
Yes, he did.
Mr. First, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. F ordinance number eleven sixteen twenty twenty-three ordinance regulating the use of cannabis and cannabis-derived products in public places. Official title and summary. Was there any questions or concerns?
I don't think so.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion.
The first and the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, print release. Mr. Meyer. Okay, summary.
Do you have to read it?
No, you just have to take.
Okay, right down here. Sorry, I didn't see that. Give consider, the.
If approval is given.
Given the ordinance eleven twenty, eleven sixteen twenty-three, the council to consider taking action to approving the official title and summary for this ordinance. The title, official title and summary will then be published in Melrose Beacon on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and include the entire ordinance containing the amendments. Ordinance number seven dash twenty dash twenty twenty-three dash three will be available at the Melrose City Center and at the Great River Regional Library, Melrose Branch. State statute requires the approval of the official title and summary by the council must be a four to five, four, four out of five vote. So the council to consider approving the official title and summary ordinance number eleven dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-three. The ordinance title, summary.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I really didn't want to read that. That's why I skipped it. All right, now we have a printer.
So December marks the end of our lease with our current printers. So I went out and looked for some quotes. I got a couple quotes, one from Marco, one from Metro Sales. I was just, we got to try out the ones from Metro Sales. It would save us about two hundred bucks a month to go with them quotes, and that would be the one that I recommend.
All right. Is there any questions?
What difference is this from what we're doing now?
The printer is five pages a minute slower, but we didn't reckon that or realize it when we did utility bills, so it didn't affect too much. There was, I'm sorry, was that a question?
Yeah, I just did what we were paying monthly now.
Oh, the Marco book came in at like eight fifty. This one was down to almost seven hundred a month. This one was down to almost seven hundred a month. It's what you see.
Yeah. So...
I'll make a motion to go with the recommendation.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Paramedic Registered Nurse Wage Scale?
Due to the Melrose Ambulance Department's pending, not pending anymore, I saw the license today, ALS certification, the council established the required paramedic registered nurse position at the nine twenty-one twenty-three meeting. The council, the request is the council to give consideration to the proposed twenty twenty-four paramedic registered nurse wage scale.
Okay, is there any questions first? I just wanna congratulate the whole ambulance department. This has been a while coming, and there's been a lot of work on all your behalf. And I am very excited for this, for our community and for all the citizens of the ambulance district. I am really excited for this. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. And then ambulance department wage scale?
So, earlier this evening at the budget workshop, Finance Director Meyer presented the proposed twenty-four ambulance department wage scale. The council to give consideration approving the proposed twenty twenty-four ambulance department wage scale.
Okay.
So, move.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. All right, old business, there is none. All right, council to, was there any questions on the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule for anybody? Okay. And we should be good. I do not have my last piece of paper here, so...
Oh, okay.
So, let's see. So, the, let's see here, the planning and zoning review, there were none. Anyone I...
Yep, chill.
All right.
Just a real quick update. This is statutorily required. On October thirtieth, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the non-equipment capital-related improvement projects. They also looked at our land acquisition and disposition projects that we are being, that we are talking about. They are fully supportive, and they found after their review that all of the city's non-equipment-related capital improvement projects proposed in the current budget, as well as the land acquisition and disposition plans, are in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So, after their diligence and review, they are fully supportive, and that is just an informational item to let you know that we did that.
All right.
Nope.
Okay. And C is supplemental letter agreement for SEH for twenty twenty-four Main Street West improvements.
This is the agreement for design of Main Street, design and construction administration of Main Street. It's separated out into two projects for twenty twenty-four based on the county's participation. First one, it'll make things smoother for our reimbursement through the county for a portion of these costs. So, so you see the two of them Friday this evening, twenty twenty-four Street improvements and twenty twenty-four First Street South. They're both broken down similarly as far as the tasks, design bidding and permitting. It all comes on the desk. The rest of the other things, I'll leave it down in the lower west side of the street.
Is there any questions on, is there one of the projects? Yep. Okay. So, the first, council give consideration to approving supplemental letter agreement for twenty twenty-four Main Street West improvement. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then the second one is, council give consider the approval of the supplemental letter agreement for the twenty twenty-four First Street South, street improvements. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I'm gonna go up to actually the podium for this one if I can. Brian Borstad was at work on October fifth and collapsed near another employee. EMS was called immediately. Chief Craig Mouse and Melrose First Responders arrived very quickly initiating CPR. Melrose Ambulance arrived and with continued help from rescue members, patient was loaded into a brig where we continued CPR and working on airway management. They were able to verify he was in a shakable rhythm, and they started air care immediately, and the hospital was updated. The ambulance continued life-saving efforts and transported to Melrose ER where meds were given and ROSC was achieved. Brian is here today because of the quick response and adequate ventilation of our local responders. I believe Mr. Borstad is in the audience. All right. This is a very big deal. This is a life-saving award. They literally, with the help of the police department, the fire department, and the ambulance department, Mr. Borstad's life was saved. And so, we would like to recognize those people this evening. So, if I can have Mr. Borstad come up here, that would be awesome. And I'm going to get the certificates. And then we would like, as your name is called, just to come up and receive your pin from Ambulance Director Egert and your certificate from Mr. Borstad. So, the first name that is going to receive the life-saving award is Joe Wieste. Joe Wieste is a member of our fire department, and he is the Assistant First Chief. So, the, I would ask that the people that are receiving these awards just stay in the chairs in this front row. So, you're like at church here in the front view, so the priest and everybody can keep an eye on you. The second life-saving award goes to Angel Vargas. Angel Vargas is also a member of the Melrose Fire Department. The third life-saving award goes to Mikhail Wong. Mikhail is also a member of the Melrose Fire Department. Oh. Oh, and yes, Mikhail works with Brian and was the first on scene. The next one goes to Hallie Felderworth. Hallie is also a member of the Melrose Area Fire Department. The next life-saving award goes to Chief Tom Buddy. He is a, the chief of the fire department and a member, obviously, of the Melrose Area Fire Department. The next life-saving award is, goes to Will Stone. Will is a member of the Melrose Ambulance Department. The next life-saving award goes to Ms. Gina Egert, who is the ambulance director and obviously a member of the Melrose Ambulance Department. The next life-saving award goes to Julie Albright. Julie is a member of the Melrose Area Ambulance Department. The next award goes to Chief, Police Chief Craig Mouse. Obviously, the chief of the Melrose Police Department. Last, but certainly not least, the award goes to Joe Finken, who is a member of the Melrose Fire Department, as well as the mayor of Melrose. Again, I think we all, these folks, a really big round of applause. So, yeah, we'll just adjourn the meeting really quick and then we can, we'll just adjourn. Can we adjourn the meeting and then take the picture, Mr. Finken?
Oh, yeah, okay. No further business, motion to adjourn. So, move.
Second.
All in favor?